All right, let's see if we can't get out of here at this point now.
But my point is that we don't do anything differently.
We're going to start without her.
Based upon that information, we don't.
No.
We're going to get started, guys. We can talk amongst ourselves, which we need to do anyway. So I'd like to reconvene the planning commission meeting September 20.
What day are we?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. And let the record show that Commissioner Lisa.
Mutertease.
Mutertease, thank you. Has another meeting that starts at two, I think, 1:30 or two, so we're going to proceed without her until she rejoins us. So we are talking now about the safety element, page 130. So are there any comments?
Yes. I don't know which item down because they're not numbered, but it says identify information regarding flood hazards, including FEMA, et cetera. In this context, what does identify information mean?
What page are you on?
Oh, 130.
130. Keep moving. I'll show you when you get there, Ted, the exact location.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items down. And on a related issue, further down, it says maps of levee protection zones. I don't know, do we have any levee protection zones?
We don't, but we do have. I guess we don't have any.
We have dams, though.
We have dams with us. That's.
That's different.
Okay.
Different section. So the first question, you know, what does identify information? We just make sure we look at the information that's necessary to provide us with, you know, information about flood hazards in the county.
One thing that called a levee is that's what it says on the map. A levee is on, by Merse, not Merse, but Wallace.
Wallace, Comanche.
Yeah, that's a levee, isn't it?
I think that that's considered a dam.
It is.
For the Holdback Comanche.
Well, yeah, but it's not Comanche Dam, it's a levee.
It's not the main dam, but it's a side dam.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that a levee is considered more of, you know, along a river.
Along a river.
Flood stage, where it comes up and keeps the flow of the river within the banks, whether artificial or natural. So what we've done is we've looked at all of the maps and also looking at the knowledge that we are working with FEMA now to update the maps to make them more accurate and.
Well, let me give you, for instance, is Coase Grove Creek identified as a levee protection zone that doesn't happen to have any levees on it?
It's not a levee protection zone, but it's certainly a flood hazard zone.
Yeah. Okay, I just wondered maybe if somebody had identified, hey, you guys need a levee in there, and we just never got around to it yet.
No.
All right. Lastly, on that section, top of page 131, the first section there, the locations of flood zones, looks to me that's like that's kind of repeat information. Am I wrong about that? Repeat. Considering the unit we just talked about, identify information regarding flood, and then below that is regarding identify information regarding flood hazards, including et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then, you know, there's three or four of them in a row there that all have to do with being aware of various flood hazards, and that just seems like a repeat of it.
It is, it's repeated in state law in slightly different terms, so that's why we just sort of carry over from what's in the safety element section of the general plan of government code. These are the things we need to look at, and we've just sort of taken the phrase that's in that government code section and sort of, you know, listed them here in this table. It sounds.
It's repeated for a reason?
I don't know what the reason is, but it's repeated in state law, so we just make sure we've just hit every section.
Okay. They supply us with the table information that we're supposed to be looking at, right?
Right, right.
Okay. That's all I have on that section.
I have two comments on page 131. In the center of the page, it says as necessary to address these requirements, the general plan's safety element background study addresses. And then the last bullet point there is hazardous materials. And when I look at the requirements that are shown in the table above, I don't see anything about hazardous materials. And so my question is, is addressing hazardous materials necessary by reason of state law requirements, and if so, where is the reference to it?
Let me double check that.
And since you're on this, it should probably say the general plan. The general plan's safety element. Technical background report. Or this report, or this. Because you are referring back to this document, right?
Mm-hmm, yes. I think we just say the. Okay, I'll rephrase that line as well.
Okay.
I'm curious as to why geotechnical is in here. What do we have in this county?
Geotechnical.
Technically, there's an earthquake fault.
Lots of them.
Yeah, there's, you know.
It's called a small.
Landslides, soil, soil safety, so, you know, the risk of shrink, swell, types of soils. You know, we don't have frost heaving here.
Landslide, probably.
Landslide potential, so basically rock and soil related issues.
All right.
Well, I still don't know why we're saying that we're addressing hazardous materials.
I think Peter's going to look into that.
I'm going to look into that, and if we're not addressing it, then I'll strike it.
Okay. My next question will be, if there is no requirement that we address hazardous materials, should we be doing it? Question for the future. And my last point is, just in terms of organization, we have these five bullet points in the center of 131. They are not in the same order as the text, and to be in the same order, you should put fire between flooding and geotechnical.
Which text are you correlating it to?
The middle of page.
What follows? What follows?
Oh.
The rest of the section.
Right, no, good point.
My next one is on 136.
Okay.
I've got a 132. The winter storm item. Federal Declaration 299, 1998. And then it has a cost, 465 million, identified as 2006.
That's in $2,006.
Oh, thank you. Is everything in $2,006 then, throughout the report? That's kind of weird. Because other dollar references don't have a year. Some do, some do say, like, two down, there's another reference to 2006.
Yeah. That was probably, and I'll double check this, those were probably adjusted to represent, because when this, this was probably studied, you know, the information was gathered in 2006, I'm guessing, and, but I'll verify this, that these were in the actual costs at the time. These numbers were adjusted to represent $2,006.
Do you have any idea why they were?
Why would they have done that?
They kind of cherry picked a couple items for that purpose?
It's probably the source from which we gained, got the information from.
Sure.
That's what it was presented as. So rather than 1998 dollars, I would assume that, you know, if we go down to the first one, flood of 1950, that's to be $2.2 million of 1950 dollars. But these two, the '95 and '98, were for some reason adjusted for the time that it was, the study was prepared, that we then gleaned that information from.
Okay, so it just caught my eye. Not the usual kind of thing that catches my eye. And then I'm done up until past where Mr. Wooster referenced.
Okay, on 136, we have a table that lists medical facilities, and missing from there is the Copperopolis Family Medical Center. There is one down in that shopping center where we had the issue about the library as respects the marijuana dispensary. I don't have the address, but I know it's there.
We can look it up now.
And then on 137, we have evacuation sites, and Copperopolis Elementary is included. What is not included is the Copperopolis Armory, which just served as the evacuation site for the Sierra Ridge Boys School on Frequell City Road. That's where they put all those students.
Copperopolis Armory.
The Armory.
Now that Mr. Wooster has brought that up, if I can interject under medical facilities, it looks like there is a, they include doctor's offices, right? So there are two in Valley Springs. The Integrated, Center for Integrative Medicine, Dr. Estuesta, and then there's a Mark Twain Satellite Office, Satellite Center also in Valley Springs on Vista del Lago.
As medical facilities?
Medical facilities. I mean, if, I don't know what they're calling a facility.
I don't either, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure. This list came out of the 2010 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is in the process of being updated right now. I know that Amy made some changes to this in August. What her source was, I don't know. Well, this had to do with the, the only thing we updated here was the fire prevention. I'm not sure how critical it is to identify doctor's offices, because they can come and go as it is.
I agree, but that's, but.
Yeah.
Somebody's called the San Andreas Family Practices in here, and I don't.
Yeah, let me look into that just to see. My thought would be, other than the, you know, sort of the emergency trauma centers, like I know there's one in Arnold, there's, you know, there's the medical facility here, there's one in Angel's Camp, even though it's in the city itself. But these doctor's offices, it doesn't really seem to me to be something that's a critical, essential public facility.
And that would apply to allergy, immunology, and asthma center on Mountain Ranch Road, too, right?
Right. So let me, let me.
So you're already talking about places where an ambulance is going to take somebody?
Or if you, you know, it's an urgent care kind of situation, you know, something that's open.
So is the hospital here, one here?
Mark Twain Medical Center, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, on Mountain Ranch, okay.
So it's a little unclear as to what the criteria is for a medical center.
For inclusion, yeah.
And you're either all inclusive, or you're just going to go to some criteria which is.
Like urgent care or a hospital, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, the table is headed Calaveras County Essential Public Facilities. And the reason I've mentioned Copperopolis is, A, it's there, it is a clinic, not just a doctor's office, and B, it's the only one around, and that's into the county.
And I believe the Mark Twain, you know, I'm not going to get the name right, the satellite one on Vista del Lago, I believe it is called an urgent care center. I could be wrong about that.
So I'll look it up and see.
What the criteria, the criteria is for.
And again, this is just, this was taken from the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We just pulled the data.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't do our own research as to what was there. And there may be a different criteria for that. But I guess, you know, again, the idea is that this is a kind of background information that we have, so we want to be as accurate as possible.
Continuing on.
Page 141. The first sentence just doesn't make any sense to me.
Too many pursuance. I would change. Pursuant to the federal, the FEMA insurance maps used for the National Flood Insurance Program. No, that still doesn't make sense.
Well, since pursuant to the federal emergency management flood.
I think if we just.
There's something missing here, because. Pursuant to the federal emergency management flood insurance maps used pursuant to the MFRP are, I mean.
No, there's something wrong. There's definitely something wrong.
That sentence is supposed to describe.
What's in Table 24?
Various zones are in Table 24. I'll rewrite that sentence so it makes sense.
Okay.
I have a 142. Which actually starts with. On Table 1, Table 31 on 144 indicates the source is FEMA. The other tables reference the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. But what's the source of the Local Hazard Mitigation Plans? Are they not FEMA as well? Or DFW, DFR? Pardon me, DWR?
Well, what we're saying here is, this is where we got this information, from a Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. We didn't go back and say, what was the source of that document? What was the source of FEMA's information for?
Well, I know you would, don't ask FEMA for the source of their information, you're not going to get anywhere. Okay, all right. The last item on Table 4A, first table on top of page 142, Calaveras County, talks about improved parcels and values and whatnot. My question, is this the rest of the county? The rest of the, this is the county, you've got various.
So we.
Locations here.
So that bottom line.
So is Calaveras County, everything other than the locations described above? Above that, that item? Because it's not a total.
No.
So this is really the rest of Calaveras County?
Not any one of those communities.
Correct.
That would make sense, we need to clarify that.
Got to be. I'm good up until page 149.
Same here, go ahead.
All righty, fire, needs some updating here.
Yeah, that's my only, my note is that we've got to flag this section so that, and we can do it now, but to revisit this, when, pardon the pun, when the smoke is cleared on the general plan, so that we can include the impact of the fire. In our to-do list, that we keep, that keeps getting longer, but I'm sure that's at least a year away. And maybe it'll take that long to kind of quantify the problem anyway, don't you think?
But we could include total number of acre, or, you know, in the list on 43, you know, with a rough estimate of acreage.
Table 43?
Mm-hmm.
Hang on. You mean that we at least know that?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, I'd say at least, we know it's like 70,000 plus or minus, now that's probably some of Amador, but we could make a pretty rough.
That's a start.
We could get a rough go at it, and we, at least right now, we know what the structures are, so we could update this.
We might even know. Is there a houses burned, houses destroyed section?
It's here. Oh, yeah, there was one, I read.
Oh, it's by.
I think it's on Table 44, page 153. The notes section, in some cases, has where, you know, 22 structures lost. Now, I think that adding.
We could add that one, too.
Yeah.
We could update both, even if they're like estimates, you know.
Well, this one, this table here is sort of pre-1979 data.
That's right, yeah.
Didn't have the level of detail that Table 44 has.
So we don't need to update 43, we need to update 44.
44, yes.
Yeah.
And we could put a.
Does anybody know off the top of your head, what year was the fire that went from here to Arnold?
Old gulf?
Seventy-nine, wasn't it? Ninety-two.
Mm-hmm, nineteen ninety-two. All right, so we good with that?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, on 149.
149.
Wait, you're going backwards, that's not.
Yeah.
Page 149. Under Table 34, the community of Clements is listed, second to the bottom on the left side.
Yes.
It's not in the county.
Right.
Not in the county.
We like them, but we, they got their own.
They're just big, good neighbors here.
That's right.
Anyone know where Sandy Dulce is?
Yes, it's up by, um.
It's in the county?
Yes.
Okay.
On the way to railroad. Okay, moving on.
Pretty pictures.
I'm okay up until hazardous materials, page 174.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
A, business and households, common sources of hazardous materials, likewise, utility corridors. Do we really need to identify that houses and have various things in them that are hazardous?
Do we need to? Probably not.
I mean, where does it go into the general plan in terms of our policies and whatnot? It's not, it doesn't, doesn't drive anything, my point. Neither one of those do, in my opinion.
Well, the utility corridors might.
Arguably, I'll buy that, I'll buy that, but the first one, I just, like.
I would say unless there's some state requirement, which was an issue we touched upon earlier, that you're going to look into.
For example, if there was a, if there was a code that says you have to keep your pesticides in something kind of a container 20 feet from your house, or whatever, then it goes.
It's primarily addressing the disposal of it. I mean, you can sort of store it any way you want to on your own property, although, you know, there are regulations of how you're supposed to, you know, when you, if you're using a certain amount, you have to get a permit. Either Environmental Management or the Ag Department. So if you're using, you know, for example, I purchased some heavy-duty poison oak spray, because usual roundup wasn't getting it, you know, the more heavy concentrated to get to the brush, and I needed to get a permit from that for the, this was in Eldorado County, from the Ag Department, they issued the pesticide permits. And there are certain storage requirements that, you know, you just have to sort of, yeah, yeah, so, most of it's logic, but what's really critical is the disposal of it. And we are restricted under some pretty severe state requirements as to what we can do with those things. You can't just toss the empty container in your trash, you have to take it to a registered disposal site, you know, and they'll have the household toxic materials, you know, pickup sites occasionally around. So it is regulated. How does it relate to our general plan is a good question.
Is there any action that we might take based on that?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I will check with Environmental Management to see if there's anything that, you know, we at a local level have control over. I believe it's primarily, we're enforcing state rules. That's what that department does. And there's very little that we could do unless we wanted to go above and beyond what the state requires.
Well, for example, there's no, there's no element, there's no general plan element that this says, you're going to, you know, you're going to find this, this is relevant to a particular general plan element. And there wouldn't be, because what you, as you say, those issues are addressed in various other ordinances and possibly are our dealings with Cal Waste, right? We sign a contract with Cal Waste, and we tell Cal Waste, we want you to set, we want you to treat this, these particular kind of materials in a certain way. Is that how it comes into play? We want you to make a special provision so that it's easy for people in their homes to get rid of their poisonous stuff.
What if Clark, what if Clark Pest Control decided to put a warehouse in our county?
That's not, that's not what this is all about. That's, that's a zoning issue, that's an M, that's an M1 zoning.
Yeah. I can't think of anything that would be directly related to, you know, this issue of, you know, business and household chemicals that would be addressed in our general plan. That doesn't mean it wouldn't be or couldn't be. So what I'll do, I will check with Environmental Management and see if there's anything that.
Some compelling reason.
I mean, it clearly is a safety issue, and right now, for example, we're working with Cal Recycle and DTSC to ensure that all of the burned homes are cleaned up properly. You just don't shovel all the ash, and it's got heavy metals and all kinds of toxic chemicals and take it to the dump.
And all of these things listed here.
And you're blowing down the highway with, you know, ash that could be contaminated, you know, this is a big concern of environmental health. And so. That kind of issue is what we're trying to address to make sure that the community is kept safe from these chemicals. How that is addressed in the general plan, I'm not sure that it is. But let me double check, and if we, you know.
I can understand how ordinances might grow out of that. Environmental Health might say to the Board of Supervisors, we really need an ordinance on weed spray, because it's such, it's in such wide use.
Yeah.
Something like that. And we believe it's contaminating groundwater. Okay, you deal with that, but it's not in the general plan.
I didn't bring my copy of the general plan today, did it? Does anyone have?
No.
No, not the full.
Yeah. Let me go back and look at, do we have any policies related to this? Are there any suggestions that Environmental Management has? And, again, this is just sort of informational, it's not critical. It certainly is a source of hazardous materials, and they're all part of the state.
There's no question that the information is correct, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah. Does it need to be in here? Probably not. Does it hurt to have in here? Probably not. Probably not.
But you will check with environmental health to get their read on, is it, is there some compelling reason?
Well, if you look at the current draft general plan, as I just did very quickly, you don't see anything that ties to this section that we've been talking about.
That, that's what I was hoping you were doing over there.
Yeah. But I mean, subject to being double-checked, I just have a general disinclination to include extraneous material, regardless of how accurate it is, and- If it doesn't make any difference, why have it?
Okay, but you'll check, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, I had the same question about utility corridors, I think Mr. Wuster may be, may have a good point that there's a, there's a relevance there. But it's specifically about hazards associated with utility corridors.
They start fires.
And these would be natural gas lines, right? We don't have any oil lines.
It could be high-power transmission lines, you know, there aren't, there are utility corridors also that use-
Okay, I'll give you that, I'll buy that one.
Yeah.
Actually, in that same section, B, utility corridors, the last sentence says, in addition, major PG&E electric transmission lines run through the midwestern portion of the county. There's also a huge NCPA line that runs all the way from the Stanislaw River clear through the county. So, I would just add NCPA, Northern California Power Authority. It's the big one you see marching right over Bear Mountain.
Okay.
We don't get the power, somebody else does. Right?
Absolutely.
Southern California, let me see if I can take a guess. My next comment is with respect to item C. We've got superfund and SLIC cleanup sites identified. Those are two different kinds of sites, correct? And then there's a bullet point, there's five bullet points there, talking about various sites, but it doesn't tell you which category they're in.
It says there are five open slick cleanup sites.
Open, oh, these are SLSC sites only.
Right.
So, we don't have any superfund sites?
Yeah, there's three, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, down below, there is. Okay, I see that, thank you very much. Okay. The completed sites, why are we listing sites that are completed? If they're, if they're done, are we, they're off the list, right?
I don't think they're ever completely off the list, that they're just done.
Probably not, actively remediating them.
Yeah.
I thought, you know, completed meant it's back to normal, but is there still sort of a taint on these, these sites because of what they were once? Are we putting the taint there? Does it belong there anyway?
The EPA took care of that for you.
Well, I don't know what the EPA rules are, I just-
I'll check to see if there's some reason that those are still on.
Where's Gregory Road?
It's down by Jenny Lynn. It, it's a small road that, oh, if you take the cutoff of Jenny Lynn Street West that comes into Highway twenty-six, there's a, it's an L-shaped road, right at the corner of the old Gregory Road, heads south, and dead ends at about Calveras River.
Great place for a pesticide dump site, huh? Okay, that's all I have until one seventy-eight.
Okay. All right, so there, that completes the safety element.
Yes, it does. For me, it does.
Any public comments?
I'm going to ask for that right now. Is there anyone, sir, would you like to speak on the safety element?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments about your hazardous waste situation.
Okay, great.
Actually-
Could you please, could you please, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm Keith Talia.
Thank you, Keith.
There's a lot of laws on the books that aren't being enforced as far as disposal of hazardous waste, like drain-o cans, for instance, I just picked that out of one because I happen to have some experience with it. But you can throw them in California, you can throw them in the garbage can, or you can take it to a hazardous waste collection facility. But it is enforced by the federal, if they were, I mean, it is a federal law if they want to enforce it. The reason they don't enforce it is, come to think about it, if all of us had something in our home, who's going to enforce it? The disposal? And most people take it to the, the county has a collection facility, in fact, they were supposed to have it during the fire, I don't know if they rescheduled it yet or not, but that frees you, you get a receipt, and it frees you, so you can prove where it was disposed of. All that I have to say.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're moving on to public facilities and services.
Page one seventy-eight.
Okay.
In the table at the top, it appears there's just a complete duplication of the third and fourth requirements, starting with general location.
Yeah, word for word, huh?
It does.
And also on one seventy-eight, and this is more of a substantive question, under second bullet point, water. I can't find here, maybe it doesn't need to be here, any reference to new state laws that establish groundwater basins and require counties or water districts or somebody to take charge of the groundwater issues in various areas. And maybe it's beyond the scope of, of this background report, and maybe even perhaps beyond the scope of the general plan, but it is coming.
Oh, yeah, I was going to ask you, it hasn't passed yet, has it?
Oh, yes, it has passed.
Yes, it went into effect last, past year. And a small portion of Calveras County is within the San Joaquin Basin.
My understanding of the, of that legislation was that it was going to affect all groundwater. Did it get trimmed back so that it's only certain-
Certain size, certain, yeah. Yeah, it affects public groundwater sources as well as commercial uses, primarily agricultural uses, but there's this typical, you know, single-family residence is not affected by it.
No matter where they are?
Right.
Even if they're overlaying the San Joaquin?
Yeah. So, the, my understanding of the, of the law is that the counties and districts need to work together to develop a groundwater management plan for, to address essentially overdrafting of those aquifers, and regulate or manage somehow the issuance of wells at a certain capacity. I don't remember what that threshold is, but it's well above what a typical single-family residence would, would use. So, it's primarily addressing municipal uses as well as commercial agricultural uses.
So, should we mention it, that this is, the laws on the books and that that's going to be-
We could add something to that. Yeah, I want to check with Jason on that and see where we might add some additional-
Just acknowledge that that's going to be coming up.
Mm-hmm.
And what water agency was designated to oversee the state ags?
I believe it's Department of Water Resources, but I'm not certain of that.
I think the way it works is each county or some agency within a county has the ability to come up with their own plan. If they either don't do it, or the state doesn't like it, the state can come in and impose its own rules. And so, it's a pretty significant set of legislation, because we haven't had any rules that regulate who can drill wells where, and take how much water in this state, and that's causing some problems. And, you know, Calveras County is lucky.
You can do what the state will.
Yeah, and so, as I say, I'm not sure that everything that county government has to deal with needs to be referred to in the general plan, but this one is pretty significant.
It could have some effect, because we do have groundwater source in Wallace, I believe it is, that CCWD uses.
When I read the legislation, I read the proposed amended legislation, this was months ago, there was a provision under which each county would designate what agency in its county was going to be the police force for this state ag. Has it come down to that, our deciding who that's going to be, or do we have some?
You know, I haven't, I haven't been directly involved in that, I don't know. I know that it was, the counties and water agencies were to select a lead agency-
Yeah.
In, in preparing the management plan. And I don't know whether that was-
That's happened.
I don't know if that's happened. My, I have this recollection, I don't know if that's fact or not, that somehow we were totally exempt because of, however the legislation, you know, evolved, that we do not rely on groundwater, except for that one little section, and that was much more a San Joaquin County issue. But let me double-check on that, if there's language we need to put in here, we can do that.
And just on that page on, you might just do a word search for background report, and just include technical, since you changed the name.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Has it cited on the tour?
Before we leave that section, what it's meant by other facilities and services, last bullet point?
That's sort of the catch-all for, you know, other general government services that are provided to the public.
Like schools and libraries.
Or even, you know, human resource type of, not human resource, but-
Catch-all, okay. Okay, fine. I have something on the next page, if nobody else has anything, no.
Okay.
Seventy-nine.
One seventy-nine?
Yeah. My note is that on table forty-eight, the first column is confusing, I think I just gave up on it. Comparison CCWD and general plan growth projections. General plan alternate means what?
This was based on some prior direction that-
Are you on table forty-eight?
Table forty-eight, yeah. So, a while back, there was a desire by the board to look at a potential alternate general plan that accommodates an additional twenty thousand population in the western part of the county.
So, you're saying there was some talk about what if it's twenty thousand more?
Right.
As opposed to the projections that it's only going to be twelve thousand more?
So, when this was being created, that was still something that was under consideration.
Wasn't that tossed out, though?
That's what I think. And I think this table probably could just be eliminated.
The whole table?
I think so. Or, or unless we just need to incorporate that one line into another table someplace.
Well, I'm just, yeah.
Because I haven't heard anything from the board that they still want to consider this much larger growth component. Now, that's something that could come out of the EIR as alternatives, although typically alternatives are usually something that's, you know, more environmentally sensitive in the, you know, when you're creating alternatives to the general plan. But we might, we might consider that with the general plan EIR, as here's an option to look at. So, that was something that was created a couple of years ago, when the board wanted planning to consider an alternative that had a much higher growth level. And I don't know if this was based on anticipated demand, because at the time when we started this whole process, there was so much pressure, development pressure, on the west county, particularly around Copperopolis and Valley Springs, Wallace area.
Yeah, that's because, let's see, it was started in oh-six, right? Oh-six?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense. The twenty thousand, by the way, is not county-wide, that's twenty thousand just in-
West of Highway forty-nine, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I think that's a good question to ask, whether or not we just want to delete the whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm on one eighty.
Just a couple of little things, so when I'm on one seventy-nine, after, you know, water, second sentence, water supplies used in the county, there's an extra apostrophe? And then who has the rights to use these supplies? And maybe, and then it says, how are the various providers, too many Rs, just may, get rid of the R, how the various providers are using and plan to use their supplies? So, the first R. And then, I don't know, do you have to put AKA Lafco? You know, just, just make Lafco in the perine? No, that was it.
Yeah.
Okay, ready?
I can cross those typos off my list.
Yes, you can. I forgot, you probably got all of these, Kelly.
Okay, one, are we on one eighty?
Yes.
Okay, the last sentence at the top paragraph reads, "Pretreatment water contaminants include upstream sewage discharge, recreational activities, and grazing." And we're talking about the North Fork of the Stanislaw River. I have to say, I seriously doubt there is any science behind the statement that the grazing is contributing pretreatment water contaminants to the North Fork of the Stanislaw River. And I will tell you that there were some articles two or three years ago in the Sacramento Papers by a doctor who claimed that that was the case, not specifically to the North Fork of the Stanislaw, but generally. There was a study done by the University of California, Davis, headed by Dr. Kenneth Tate and a group of scientists under him, that did, in fact, study water quality in the Stanislaw National Forest, and found there was no problem due to grazing. There was a small issue, if you will, with respect to water quality, short distances below campgrounds, but those resolve themselves when you get a few miles downstream, and so I don't think that that statement is correct or supportable. I would question the inclusion of upstream sewage discharge as well on the North Fork. Where is this coming from? Not Arnold's, not Camp Connell, that's all San Antonio Creek. And what is there upstream? Not much. So, the question is, where is this coming from? And it's, it's not supported, it shouldn't be in there.
If this is not an addition, this is something that's been around for a while. So, you're saying this came from somebody's report from way, way back, and it just kind of got plopped in there?
That would be my suspicion.
Well, you know, sort of related to that is a sentence before that. Stanislaw's river water quality is relatively good. You know, relatively good could be a lot different, my definition, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't really mean anything, because it's, it's all subject to what, how you interpret it, relatively good.
I noticed that we talked about the other, let's see, so we talked about North Fork of Stanislaw, we talked about Calveras, McCollum, and there is no similar statements about that. I think at this point, we could just strike those last two sentences. It's not something that, well, I suppose that we could develop general plan policy language that talks about, you know, protection of water quality, surface water quality, but this doesn't really add any scientific information, background information to that. If we had something that was more analytical, as far as each river, river basin, it says, you know, here's the, and there's a standard set, you know, what, what does good mean, what does relatively good mean? What does poor mean? And we had, you know, this many parts per million, you know-
And there was a threshold, and that it exceeds it, like, just like air quality.
Like air quality. If we had that, we could, you know, so-
Right, I would agree.
Put that for each river basin, and that could mean something to us. Other than this, it's sort of a meaningless statement, so, if I were taking it out.
Okay.
On the next paragraph, I have an item, does anybody else?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
What, from my information, water rights and consumptive water rights are really the same thing? Interchangeable? Is there some difference there?
You could have water rights for power generation.
That you're not given drink.
So it's, so PG&E or, you know, whoever's generating power, the NCPA has rights to the water for power generation, but it's put back into the stream.
That was a big, that was a big deal at the American River Project.
Oh, yeah.
Were they, were really being very closely guarding what was consumptive and what wasn't.
Mm-hmm. So yes, there is a difference.
Okay. The sentence that begins in the middle of that paragraph, "The reservoir has a storage capacity," talking about Hogan, "three hundred seventeen thousand acre feet. CCWD's thirty-one thousand change acre feet in water rights from this source are held by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation and are contractual rights." The sentence doesn't make sense to me because CCW's water rights can't be held by somebody else. The water can be held by somebody else, but not the rights. Does it, doesn't it mean, does it mean to say that of the water held by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, CCD has water rights to three, thirty-one thousand acre feet?
I think maybe they're meaning not held by it, but it's that the Bureau of Reclamation might be the one that.
I think it's maybe awkwardly worded sentence is that CCWD has a contract for water, held, water rights held by.
The Bureau.
Bureau.
Right, that's what I was trying to say.
So they don't have the water rights themselves, but the federal government does, managed by the Bureau of Reclamation, but they have a contract with them to utilize that water. It's sort of, the sentence is written sort of backwards.
Yeah, backwards is right.
So I'll rephrase that so it's clearer.
Also, in a few places, there's, the initials AF, which everybody knows is acre feet, and then there's an AFA, are all the AFA's typos?
I think that'd be annual acre feet.
Annual feet acre, annual feet by acre?
Yeah, or acre feet annually, maybe.
Where is AFA?
I've seen the.
Next sentence from the one we just read.
Yeah.
I think it could mean acre feet annually.
Okay. I assume that all acre feet were acre feet annually, how else do you measure it?
Don't know.
Well, it could be just some capacity. A reservoir has an acre foot capacity.
But this is a quantity.
Oh, yeah, but when you're talking about a right, you're talking about?
This could be a quantity for a time period, though, versus just a quantity as a.
Yeah, well, you're talking about a quantity, that, of course, but this one is, is talking about a right. So whenever you talk about a water right in acre feet, it's acre feet annually, correct? There's no other?
I have no idea.
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I will verify that and clarify.
There's several references to AFA, so I assume they're all the same. And then I'm done with that page. Wait a minute, yes, I'm done with that page.
Well, okay, I'll succumb to my proclivity to catch typos. Under Calaveras River, fourth line down, where it says through and agreement, no D, should be and agreement with the U.S. Bureau.
Are we still on one eighty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then going down the middle, there's a reference to the WTP intake is located one mile downstream. I'm not sure everybody knows what WTP means. I take it to mean water treatment plant?
Yes.
And then fourth line from the bottom of that paragraph, where it talks about the intersection of Ridge Road and Railroad Flat. I think it would be Railroad Flat Road.
Or just Ridge and Railroad Flat Roads?
Either way.
Yeah.
And finally, on that page, the bottom full paragraph, right in the middle, it talks about the average flows of the McCallum River, should be flow, singular.
On the next page, I'm going to jump in and knock one of Kelly's off the list. Second line down, first word is in, I think it should be of. That's all I have there.
I have something at the bottom of that paragraph, where it says, CPUD plans to do these improvements fiscal year twelve thirteen. So they either did them or they didn't, maybe we could.
Where are you, ma'am?
I'm on the first paragraph, last sentence.
One eighty-one, first paragraph.
I'm on next page, one eighty-one, yeah, right here.
Shad's Reservoir.
No, 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 CPUD plans to do these improvements fiscal year twelve thirteen.
Right.
So we're in fifteen now, they either did them or they didn't.
This information comes from the most recent Lafco, what's called Municipal Services Report, which was prepared in two thousand twelve, so that's why that was there. We can, we can verify.
Right.
Whether or not that's been done or not.
That just seems, okay. Then another one in the middle of this alphabet soup. JVID. Who's JVID?
Jackson Valley Irrigation District.
Thank you, okay.
But maybe it should be spelled out.
It should be at some point, yeah.
Yeah, the first time it's used, it should be spelled out.
Right.
Also in that same paragraph, up a couple lines where it says, talks about with senior water rights to the district, doesn't say which district, and more than one district has been referred to above. I'm assuming it's CCWD, but I don't know that.
Probably East Bay Mud is what it's being referred to here.
Yeah, that's what I took it as being, East Bay Mud.
Oh, I'm trying, where was I, I was writing notes, I didn't.
Because it said, it's East Bay Mud's position in the hierarchy of McColty water users, so it's, the subject is really them.
So we just should say East Bay Mud?
I would, yeah, especially in a situation like this where you have lots of districts.
Yeah. I'm sorry, what line are we on?
Well, we're right in the middle of the paragraph, the second paragraph, where you see JVID. It's PG&E, AWA, and JVID hold twenty thousand acre feet. And then right above that, two sentences above it, that's where it says district, which, which should.
Oh, with senior right.
Yes, right.
I'm not sure that it is East Bay Mud, Fawn, because it's, that sentence is talking about ninety-eight point seven million gallons a day of the supply is distributed to three Sierra Foothill Counties. And it goes on with senior water rights to the district, this amounts to a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. I don't think that's talking about East Bay Mud, but we need to figure out who they are talking about.
Right, which district?
I will talk to the author and find out.
Okay. Well, because above that is combined the district, and again, I think they're talking about the district, it seems to be the subject to this whole paragraph kind of be is, is East Bay Mud, but.
Maybe, maybe that's supposed to be districts.
Yeah, something.
Because it talks to me about East Bay Mud, CCWD, and other county. Combine the, maybe the districts? But that's, we need to find out.
And then at the bottom of that paragraph, the supply of McColty River is generally high quality. I would strike that since we just had that discussion for the Stanislaw.
Okay.
Okay, one eighty-one.
I'm good up until one eighty-six?
Oh, I did that. One eighty-six, all right?
Okay. Near the top of table forty-nine, service area wholesale water, Flyin Acres is referenced as a private company, but on page one ninety-five, it's deleted. One ninety-five.
Flyin Acres has been taken over by CCWD. If it's listed somewhere, we should also strike it there.
And it's on forty-nine?
Well.
Table forty-nine?
If you skip ahead to page one ninety, one ninety-five, in the middle of the play, of page, there's a reference that's now been, the title, total reference has been deleted.
Oh, right.
Flyin Acres, et cetera, et cetera, CCWD. So it's gone there, but it's, it lives on here.
On, on table forty-nine?
Yeah.
I'm trying to find it.
I'm trying to find it, too. Oh, there it is, it's under wholesale water.
Right.
Flyin Acres.
Okay, so for purposes of these tables, Flyin Acres no longer exists, correct?
Right.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
Also on that same page, in the box above, entitled Retail Water. West Point is stated twice.
That's because they're so important.
We still on one eighty-six?
If you are.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I have some difficulties interpreting this table. It states water demand and supply existing and projected CCWD. In particular, when we get to North Fork Stanislaw River, we have water supply acre feet a year. The average is six thousand four twenty-one, the maximum is fourteen thousand, and the safe or firm is fourteen thousand. Which doesn't seem to make sense, that you would say you have a safe, firm water supply equivalent to the maximum. And the same thing happens on the last two entries there, as to the Middle Fork of the McCallum and San Antonio Creek. Now, I suspect these numbers came right from CCWD, but to the uninitiated who reads this, it looks as if we're making some pretty generous assumptions about what our safe water supplies are here.
We notice there's a footnote there, F, that describes that. Essentially says what you just said, that this is CCWD's data that we're providing here. The.
But it doesn't tell us how, why the safe slash firm numbers are equal to the maximum.
Doesn't seem very safe, does it?
Well, and when you read the definition of safe firm in footnote D, it says it's a maximum annual quantity that can be supplied continuously from a water supply system under hydrological conditions similar to the most critical dry year of record. Why would that be the same as the maximum?
I'm surprised that Dennis Mills, who is a CCWD board member, who sat through the morning session, isn't here for this, I thought he would be here for the, this discussion.
But could, could it be, the other items here, as Mr. Booster points out, the safe is always less than the maximum. But in this case, maybe the maximum was reduced to the safe level, rather than assuming that the safe level was increased to the maximum level?
It probably has a lot to do with senior water rights, so on McColty or the Calaveras River, the, we have rights to the water, and as long as there is sufficient flow, that all the people withdraws in that reservoir, in that river, can suck from it, then we're okay. But if we're in a drought situation, and the, you know, average, or the ability, you know, so you have a maximum capacity of certain acre feet, as long as the reservoir is full, one's good. But once it drops down, well, East Bay Mud's going to get the first crack at that water, and, you know, CPUD or some other, you know, agency that's lower down in the pecking order may get mud. That's how I would interpret that, but I'm not absolutely certain. So what I will do is provide a little better description of what safe firm really means. So, well, I don't know if I can really add much more to that footnote D there, because that's essentially what it says, that, you know, during a dry year, and, you know, limited by the contracts and permits, if East Bay Mud gets all ten thousand or a hundred thousand acre feet of water that's in that reservoir, and if it's full, there's two hundred thousand acre feet, but the first hundred thousand goes to East Bay Mud, and everyone else is, you know, lower on that rung, a lower rung of water rights, they have junior water rights to that. And this is what's happening with, I guess, CPUD right now, is they're limited because they don't have the senior water rights of some of the other water agencies out there.
The same kind of an issue shows up on page one eighty-nine, as to union public utility dish, issue where the safe and firm corresponds to the maximum, which is quite different than the average. So I think there's probably some technical explanations for why these numbers are the way they are, but to the uninitiated, they look suspect.
I just noticed on that same.
One eighty-six. Let the record show that Commissioner Lisa's joined us. Rejoined us.
I'm all the way up to one ninety-four.
Oh, one ninety-four, okay.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, on one ninety-four, under Community Water Systems Private, down there, this Rite of Passage slash Sierra Ridge Academy is having just groundwater. That is not correct, they get water out of San Antonio Creek via the Olfrico Ditch. And on page one ninety-six, it makes it clear that Rite of Passage has four wells, one destroyed, and San Antonio Creek. So you just need to check the box for surface water, because they do get it both ways. On one ninety-four.
Well, it says, the water source includes four wells and San Antonio Creek. So where is the incorrect?
On one ninety-four, there's a chart there that.
Right passage, so you just need to check surface water.
Correct.
Okay, cut that.
Well, before we leave that page, I have a general question about transient water systems.
That's on one ninety-four?
Yeah. Anyway, we have various items in here, restaurants and whatnot. Why are they considered systems? And why wouldn't all restaurants, for example, be considered a system if these are? Why are these restaurants on a system labeled as systems and not every one of them? I don't understand the category.
Good question.
There's certainly more.
Burson Doughnut?
I can only speculate that it's somehow related to the way Department of Water Resources categorizes. You've got small water system, you've got variety of different licenses and permitting requirements for various types of water systems. I would guess that.
I could see that, like Tamara Cabin Owners Association or the Mutual Water Company, but Burson Doughnut?
Yeah.
Or the Blender Inn?
I think what this says, what, as I read this note down here, you know, C, water systems that do not constantly serve the same people, rest stops, campgrounds, gas stations. So it's people that are just coming by, you're at a restaurant, you stop, you get a glass of water, and then, you know, you're, you move on. of water, and then, you know, you're, you move on. Where the non-transient systems are primarily the same people. You've got schoolchildren, they're, they're, you know, they're coming back, you know, daily drinking the same water. It, it's, again, just the reporting mechanism that we get from the, the state or from the LAFCO Municipal Services Report is just the way it's, they're categorized.
And so the reason that Burson Donut's on here is that because they're, I mean, if we look at the category on the table, non-LAFCO-regulated Calaveras County drinking water providers.
So if you have a, a well and you're serving that well water, you're using that for the public, it has to be inspected and certified to meet certain standards.
Okay. That makes, the versus, like, you, why would you have a, all the list of all the businesses? Because they're on a municipal system.
Right, right.
And these guys are serving from their particular well.
Yes, that's right. Because Burson does not have public water.
All of these, everybody here has a well.
A well.
Yes.
Even Burson Donut?
Has, must have a well. They got the wrong well.
Okay.
No, they're not all well, like Cottage Springs is an actual spring water system.
Well, yeah, I mean, the surface water...
That's not hooked up, not affiliated with the municipal system.
Right, right. They're not contracting with CCWD or some other agency to provide that water. It's inspected at the treatment plant.
Plant source, yeah. I've got one on 195, just Mineral Mountain Estates Water, Mutual Water Association, just to make the acronym consistent, M-E-M-W-A.
M-M-E.
Well, you can see it right down below.
Oh, yeah.
And then, yeah, that's good.
I, actually, what that MWA stands for is Mutual Water Association.
Okay.
This is like under Blue Lake Springs, it's called MWC. They're a mutual water company.
However you want to do it. Be an NWA or MME, MWA.
They call themselves BLS, MWC.
Yeah. I, I don't know then, why we even need to have those acronyms at the end of those lines.
Okay. Moving on, others?
196 for me.
196.
Just a question. What does it mean to be most vulnerable to in the first three paragraphs? Most vulnerable to historic mining operations and septic systems or mining op, yeah, it's all the same, mining operations and septic systems. No, no, no. The first two are mining operations and septic systems vulnerability wise, and the last one, Rite of Passage, is septic systems. What does that most vulnerable to mean?
The quality of the water could be compromised because of the proximity of septic systems or the mining operations that could contaminate the water source.
Not is, but could be?
Is vulnerable to.
Well, that's kind of what I'm, I'm trying to figure out is, are these, we know that because they, water's been tested and we've, they've found elements, you know, heavy metals or something from the mining operation in it?
Maybe not in it, but close in proximity to it.
Is that how it works?
I, I, I don't know. I could check with the water quality guys in environmental health and, but I'm, I'm assuming that because of the status of the well, the location of septic systems, the location of a mine, that there is a potential vulnerability.
Okay, well, I'm saying this, this puts red flags up on these people. I just want to make sure that they're justified, that there's a red flag there.
I assume that it's there because there is a, you know, a red flag of some sort.
That's all I have in that section. Oh, wait a minute. Let's see, that section. Oh. If nobody has anything else, I have a little, on 2001, page 201.
Okay.
At the very top, I think. Oh, never mind.
I've got one on 203. One, two, three, four, fifth bullet down. It, it sounds like a policy, providers shall demonstrate the adequacy of their domestic water supplies and providers shall specify curtailment policies. Even the one above that is providers should initiate, again, those sound, don't...
So, so these are statements from the LAFCO's Municipal Service Report.
Okay.
And this is what it says in that report.
So if we, we should cite that that's where they're...
That's what it says before all these bullets.
I did, okay.
The following reflects the recommendations of the local agency commissions, municipal service review, and are used to advise the general plan.
Where, is that on...
On the previous page.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I'm still on 201.
It doesn't reflect Calaveras County policy, consult the adopted general plan goals policies. Oh, that's good.
Okay. Recommendations of that. All right. Okay. So table 61 is, is this surprise, this is a LAFCO table, too?
Yes.
So all of their blue stuff is that, that's there? Did we do anything with this?
The blue stuff is what we added. I, I mean, the, all the language was there. It was highlighted in blue, affected the, what's it called, the disadvantaged?
Legacy.
Legacy disadvantaged communities. So these are communities that have a certain, or below a certain threshold of, of income and that were required to review public facilities and services for those communities. And so these are identified improvements that would be recommended by LAFCO. And the blue ones, the highlighted blue ones are those that specifically target those legacy disadvantaged communities.
Okay, so one thing, you might put legacy in there. It's just disadvantaged communities, just for the legacy communities.
Excuse me, which ones were the LAFCO ones?
Well, it's all LAFCO, but what the county has done is to highlight in blue those LAFCO projects that are...
For the disadvantaged, one disadvantaged community or another?
Yeah, for any of them that are listed as legacy disadvantaged communities. So how old is this table?
This came from the 2012 MSR.
At a high level, what I am interested in on this table, which relates to my interest in some other tables, is that it looks like these are, these are policy and goals type statements. So I don't understand why they're in the background in form.
It was information that was available to us as we were required to look at the capabilities of public facilities, particularly water providers, disposal providers in relationship to the general plan. The information, the most recent information, the best information we had was the LAFCO Municipal Services Review document. This is just a, it's not creating policy to say, this is what's in that document, we can look at it, we can say, hey, those are good ideas, we should incorporate those into general plan policies, or, no, we disagree with that. That's up to the, you know, it's not something we think we need to address in our policy language.
I think it is good to include their intentions and what they see as infrastruc, you know, their, their infrastructure water needs because they serve a lot of the communities. You know, I think it is good information to have in here.
So example would be if there's a district that, you know, is pretty much at capacity, they have no additional water rights, they're struggling to maintain their, their facilities, yet our general plan shows, hey, we're going to, you know, put another 20,000 homes in this area. Is that good planning?
Yep. We need to have it.
You know, so that's, that's the purpose of this information, is to look at that and say, okay, since we don't control the water ourselves, we rely on another agency to do that.
We need to know what they've got. The only thing I would say is that, I mean, I would, there, there's definitely a lack of specificity in here. But I don't know if that's, you know, I guess that's not our call. I mean, like, it would say replace, in the Union Public Utilities District, replace half a mile of older mains and surface li, service lines. But it doesn't say where, you know, is it like along this street or along there or in the south part of town?
Well, I think if someone needed to find that specific, it makes you go to the MSR, which is a big, thick document that has all that kind of detail.
All of the detail on there. You know, like Wallace, CSD, Surface Water Supply. And, you know, well, what about it? So. If it were our stuff, you know, I would definitely probably, and you're right, it's probably in there.
I mean, between the individual districts' plans, you know, they've got capital improvement plans, they should, I, I would think and hope, and then the LAFCO review of those plans and their capacity to serve. That's what LAFCO's responsibility is, is to ensure that these special districts can actually provide the service that they're empowered to do.
Right.
My next note is on 207, unless somebody has.
Okay.
The table at the bottom half of the page is all, you know, all the items are crossed out, and that carries over onto 208, 9, and 10. Pardon me, not 10, but 9, 29. The crossed out items are items that are, are projects that have either been done or are not going to do.
No, the, the table above, it's on page 206, if I'm not mistaken.
That took its place?
Replaced that table. Our determination was that that, that table was unnecessary.
Well, you're saying the information is elsewhere included?
No, I think that's what he's saying is that they took it out and the, the table 62...
No, I'm sorry, it's table 63, it's the one below. So we, we deleted that table and rather than try to do a whole bunch of changes internally, we just replaced that with the table on page 209 and 20, 210.
Oh.
So table 63?
Yes.
Replaces...
I know we did that, I'm trying to remember which ta, which table replaced which.
The table I'm talking about, it doesn't even have a number.
Because we crossed it out.
Right.
It's okay, so it is, we replaced table 62. So this table here replaced this one.
Right.
We simplified it.
And made it much less detailed.
And they replaced it, if you go to page 208, 209, turn that one over. This one starts picking up with table 63. So this table here, this is one table.
That's right.
Replaced this, put this in this.
So part of this larger table had a whole bunch of stuff that was outside the county. So we just pulled out those things that, and we added the line affecting Calaveras County at the, in the, the heading. So table 62 here replaced this one with just those projects that affect Calaveras County. We just simplified it.
I'm good up to 216.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Table 67, are we still on, we're still on for the same LAFCO report?
Yes.
Okay. And my note was to say that these were like goals and hollows of statements, so I, now I understand. I can skip that note. So I'm up to 220 then. This is kind of a, I think we talked a little bit about this, under disadvantaged legacy communities, I think we kind of hit on this subject when we were dealing with the housing element. We're sort of stuck with this comparison to the statewide median household income and 80% identifying a, 80% of that identifying a, a low-income person or a low-income community
Right.
in this case. But there's no sort of footnote or cross-reference to a cost of living index for the people in our county.
Well, this would be based on, on the counties. It's, it's, it's the, it's not a statewide average. The state standard is 80% of the median, but it is, it is adjusted for locality.
Where? A disadvantaged community is identified by having a median income, that means the...
Oh, you know what? You're right. Statewide median income house.
Okay, so that 80% comes from, you, you take the average income from a community, and if that average is 80% of the statewide median, then you've got a disadvantaged community, right?
Yes.
Whereas, you might be able to live in that, in that community at 80% of the statewide average and live a hell of a lot better than you, than you can elsewhere. You are not living at a, you're not living at a low-income level, you're living at a medium or higher income level as compared to San Mateo County. So, and, and this is probably not the place for it, but I don't know, maybe it is because this, these, these numbers, these factors go into housing element in a big, big way. And I'm pretty sure what I'm saying is true, and yet there's, there's, there's no reference to it. We're sort of stuck with this formula that the state has handed us, and the state, I understand they're controlling the housing element, but it doesn't really paint a really good picture of these communities. Which, what are our disadvantaged communities? Sheep Ranch, for example?
Sheep Ranch, well, Moak Hill, Mountain Ranch, Real Flat, San Andreas, Vallecito, and West Point.
Yeah.
Hence why it's so important to have community plans.
I, I agree with you.
To paint a whole, like, kind of set a different picture.
I'm saying that our, our community plans and our, to the extent our community plans reference their, their legacy or disadvantaged status...
I doubt, I doubt that they will.
I, I don't think that people should consider themselves disadvantaged. I hope they don't.
We, we, we are required to address it. We're moving it from the land use element to the public facilities and services element, that discussion.
And thank you.
And, you know, of course, we will be incorporating the community plans, at least some of them. And you're absolutely right, when you take a statewide average, it doesn't really consider the wide variety of costs of living in different parts of the state. It is what it is. I wouldn't spend a lot of anxiety over it. You know, we identify it, you know, it's great where we can say, hey, we've got the program and, you know, that's going to help that community and it's considered one of those that need some additional assistance. Good, we're addressing that need. I don't know that it, it, you know, it may actually help us in, you know, acquiring grant money. I, I don't know the, the real purpose of that analysis other than to identify areas that could use some additional assistance in providing infrastructure and services.
And this is something new, wasn't required in previous general plan updates, so.
Yeah, this is something new that the, our legislature decided was a grand idea. And we're trying to address it best we can. I, I think that it's, it's an exercise.
Okay. I would like to see this as an exercise. When we have time, somebody can do an analysis of a cost of living, make comparisons, not just with these, these particular communities, but countywide. What's it like to live in the Calaveras County, cost of living wise? How can you live even if you're at 80% of the statewide median? Because I think that the information would be relevant and valuable and surprising to some. That's a bugaboo of mine, I, I admit that completely. That's a bugaboo of mine, I admit that completely, I just, I have a problem with the state making these rules. And, you know what, if we were Rhode Island, it probably wouldn't make any difference. But we're not Rhode Island. We're huge California, and we've got all the diversity, and that, that plays into a different kind of cost of living in our area.
Okay, moving on, stay on track here.
Okay, on 220 and 221, there is no description of Sheep Ranch as a disadvantaged legacy community, but when we get to 224, it pops up on the chart, but we haven't told anybody that it exists on page 221 or anything about it.
It's because we're not too sure how long it's going to be around.
Well, they wrote this before the fire started.
Well, it's the same with Evans Pass, it wasn't, it's the same, 220, 221.
This is pre-fire.
Okay, so, that's a question.
Well, and also, I think the title on 68 should be, are we still talking about disadvantaged legacy communities? Again, if we are, I think it should be in the title.
Well, it's the same communities that are called disadvantaged legacy communities, communities on page 220 and 221, so I think we are.
Right, but I think it should be in the, identified as such, otherwise you'd think you're talking about some other disadvantaged communities. And Sheep Ranch.
There was a reason for that, I don't remember what it was.
About that title?
About why.
Sheep Ranch.
Sheep Ranch was listed on here, but not considered a, it had to do with the amount of population, it didn't qualify.
Oh, that's, number is...
So that's why, then, the title of this would just be disadvantaged.
Well, it's got more than 10 inhabited dwelling units, I know that.
Is that what you're saying?
It's got 11.
Seems a little apples and oranges to throw this in here.
I don't know why Evans Pass and Sheep Ranch are included in this list, other than these were just...
Maybe they should be separate then, and not, you know, you should keep legacy communities together, and then if there's other...
So the reason that these were listed in the PG&E Urban Water Management Plan Program, even though they are outside of these... I'll double-check that.
Okay.
When we bring it back, either I'll delete it or explain why those are there, even though they're not considered disadvantaged legacy communities.
And if they're not, but they need to be there, perhaps, you know, like at the bottom with a little special, you know, so they're not intermingled?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, they certainly have more than 10 dwelling units. I don't know about the income. It's definitely geographically separated from other communities by miles.
Yeah.
It's existed since probably the 1850s or 60s.
All right, well, Peter will check on that.
I'll still want to check on that.
All right, moving on. I feel the end in sight.
And by the way, just for clarity, this is still Lafco report ongoing, correct? Or not? Or did we, no, okay, so under disadvantaged communities?
No.
Okay, then, in that case, then I have an issue with table 68.
222.
Page 222, page, table 68. I'm back to my goals and policies objection. I understand it now with respect to the Lafco report, we're just plopping that in there as a reference, but on, on table 68, we've got various statements here that have to do with projects, wish lists, and...
I think those would be provided by the providers. I mean, I can tell you for the McCallum Hill Sanitary District, you know, this would be their, their wish list of what they want to accomplish, right?
I believe that's correct, I'll verify that and identify the source of...
Yeah, can we say who it is that...
That provided the list, yes.
Well, that would be the implication from the headings, for example, at the top, McCallum Hill Sanitary District. Then there's a colon, which suggested to me that it's coming from them, but it would be better if it was spelled out, if that's the case.
Right. And it's probably a little bit dated, not, because they already, they got a grant and a loan to replace the clay.
I'll make sure I update that, too.
Probably just do a word search again for disadvantaged communities and legacy. Okay, because it's kind of throughout here. Okay. Next.
I'm up to 226.
I'm at 225 first, if you don't mind. Top paragraph. Now, this, this top paragraph, see, I'm on my same issue with respect to goals and policies, and this particular paragraph says, "Where feasible and desirable," I'm in the middle of it, more or less, "contract for operations and maintenance services, prepare capital improvement plan with the financial plan as a basis," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which, which is a goal.
Well, again, above that, it says Lafco's 2012 Final Water and Wastewater Municipal Services Review provides suggestions for alternative or supplemental funding summarized as follows. That's a Lafco list.
Okay, so that's, that jumps back to the previous Lafco...
I don't know, but I just do know that that's a Lafco list.
The more I look at this, the more I think this probably does come from the municipal services review, this table 68, which is, we need to verify the source of that information.
But that could be a Lafco list, too.
I think it's Lafco list, too.
Well, it's probably, they all, they all, they probably provided the information to Lafco, yeah.
Then I'm on 226, I think somebody else was.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, under oil and natural gas, on 226, about three-quarters of the way down, it says, "There are no oil or natural gas lines in Calaveras County." If you go back to 174, it said, "According to California Energy Commission's map of natural gas and pipeline storage facilities, PG&E natural gas pipelines are located in the northwest portion of the county. Additional pipelines distributed natural gas throughout the county to end users." So, the statement's on 174 and 176, I...
What page was that, Kelly? 170?
174.
Okay.
And actually, while I'm on 174, where it says, "Additional pipelines distribute natural gas, distribute natural gas throughout the county to end users," I don't think that's correct.
Well, how many end users, do we?
Well, we do in places.
Yeah.
I mean, a cement plant, I think, you could get gas.
You had, used a lot of...
Well, yeah, but I mean, in San Andres, we have natural gas at all the homes, too.
Oh, you do? Oh, I didn't know that.
For those who signed up for it.
There's also natural gas in Valley Springs.
Oh, is there, really? So there needs to be some work on that section.
Yeah, okay, that was added, and I'm not sure that was, it was meant to address, like, major transition?
Or transmission lines, yeah.
Transmission lines.
Well...
That needs to be fixed.
They're all transmission lines.
The statement on 226 is wrong.
I would say it is.
Right.
Right.
The statement on 174 is partly correct. It's not correct where it says, "Pipelines distribute natural gas throughout the county."
Right.
You can say, "Additional pipelines distribute natural gas."
Replace the natural gas lines in San Andres, they distribute to the homes.
I think we identify which communities has natural gas. Because I think it's only Valley Springs and San Andreas, right?
Yeah. And some in between, yeah, I can, yeah. The new school out there on full station road, that's on it.
So I'll clarify that on page 174, and we'll fix the discussion of oil and natural gas. I'll look back and see what was intended there, whether it was supposed to be like major transmission lines of a certain capacity, or, you know, if you've got, you know, what was the, the big transmission line that was, that's still being debated in Congress these days? You know, something like that to go through, you know, that's a fairly significant resource, infrastructure that could have an effect on, you know, the county. We don't have anything like that, obviously.
No.
But there are localized transmission, regional or area, you know, transmission facilities, so.
Yeah, in, in the natural gas world, you would call a transmission line anything that kind of goes from one, one community to another. And then from there, it's distribution lines.
Yeah.
But a transmission line doesn't have to be this big, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about telecommunications, there's no information about telecommunications. It's under other? Is that, is it somewhere in here?
In the general plan under facilities and services.
No, there isn't any other.
So it's just missing.
Well, on 226, it says it's included in the general plan, public facilities and services element.
But this, we should, is there no background information about where we've got information about, you know, towers and internet service?
Well, this statement seems to say that the background information is in the element.
I'll, I'll double-check that section as well.
I'm done until 2:30.
I'm done, period.
Okay, on 2:30, there's a table 74, and in the middle, it references the Copperopolis Library. And as we know from the marijuana hearing, it's not at 60 Cob, Cobber Cove Drive.
Yeah.
It's at 3505 Spangler Lane.
But, I guess for now.
We can take that change. That's, that's the most recent information we have.
The tenant's report's done, it'll be somewhere else.
All right. Mr. Talia, would you, would you like to provide some comment on this public facilities? Okay, please. And I'll, and I'll save you the time, it's, it's, wait a minute, Keith Talia.
Yeah, right.
I signed in for you.
I don't know if you know it or not, but you're talking about groundwater for, before this year, and while it's still in effect this year, and to the beginning of well drilling, I guess. By law, well-drillers had to submit within 30 days a report of a well they drilled to the state. This information was all sealed by the state. I've ever worked with many high-powered, so to speak, state employees that tried to get information, that would have saved them much money on projects, and they wouldn't. But this year, now, they're releasing some of the information because of the drought and the depletion of our groundwater. But these reports included depths of water and depths of pumpable water, how many gallons a minute they would produce, and where it was located, et cetera, as a form put out by the state. The other thing I want to comment on, somebody made the comment about NCPA power all going to Southern California, that's not true. The fairgrounds at Angels Camp gets their power from NCPA, as do many school districts throughout this county. And can I make a comment back about hazardous waste?
Yes, you may.
Hazardous waste is, the law is written as based on cradle to grave. I mentioned that, you know, throwing a drain-o-can in the garbage goes down to landfill, Milton, Rock Creek landfill. But if a lady living next to that dump gives birth to a three-legged baby, 25 years from now, they go back, and if they can prove that the drain-o-can causes a misbirth, then she can sue the district for very much money. Incineration is the only way to guarantee that there's no hazardous waste, and incineration, unfortunately, is a bad word in California. When we first went into this hazardous waste, there were firms that were making portable generators, they'd bring it right to your site, they burned dirt and et cetera, that had hydrocarbons in it. And very soon, the CARB, which is California Regional Resources Board, jumped on it and made all incineration illegal in California. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Any other, do you need any clarification on our...
No, I think I got, on this, just to, sort of, the next step in the process. Now, where I'm at is I have the edits to the land use element completed. I do need to write up a staff report that sort of describes that and sort of outlines some things. I had hoped to get that done last week, didn't happen, obviously. And, still, my goal is to have it available by the first, so that we can start discussion of that on the 8th. The, we have not received the information yet from Ford Construction, CB Asphalt, for Jason to complete the review of the 035 determination. And, even if you got it, I wouldn't have time to do anything with it anyway. So, everyone, the applicant is aware that we'll have to continue it again, but it will be on the agenda, so we can open it and then continue it. And hopefully by then, we'll have information and have a firm data when we can actually hear that.
I'm sorry, you're talking about the asphalt, plant peel issue?
Yes.
It was going to be on the 8th, but it's not anymore?
Right, we, they haven't given us the air quality information that we need yet to finish up that, that review, so Jason can make that final determination.
One remaining item on the, on the list of things to do, or, or, or air quality can't, or environmental can't do anything until they get that data, is that the deal?
Yes, I don't know if that's the only thing, without, I know that's one thing that we're waiting on. There may be others. But we haven't received the information yet, so it hasn't been able to finish the review. We've been in communication with Ford and their representatives, and I understand that, and they're okay with that. So, since we really don't have anything else on the agenda, if I can get the staff report done by next Thursday, which I should be able to do, then we'll have the land use element, we'll start, can start the land use element. And I say start.
So no meeting next week?
So no meeting next week.
Well, land use on the 8th.
Land use on the 8th, and then maybe some other minor issues, if we can get anything else calendared. I don't think we have anything else ready to go. We've already sent out the, the public notice for that meeting, right, Annette? Yeah. What else is going on? So, it's going to take some time to dig up some of this information and make these corrections, so we'll just bring that back up when it's ready.
Okay.
But I think we can continue to move forward, at least with land use, I think there's going to be a fairly lengthy discussion, you know, we're certainly not going to get through it with, in one, one meeting, there'll be a lot of public comment, I'm sure. I do not intend to bring back the maps right away. In fact, what I'm thinking of is the maps would be the last thing that we review, because there could be policy language in some of the other elements that could affect the maps. And so, I'm going to wait for that to be last, or maybe second to last, because I've still got to figure out how to incorporate the community plans.
Second to last of the discussion on land use, or second to last on the general plan?
Of the general plan.
So, but then the land use has, that's going to be the key trigger for people's participation, right? I mean, they're going to be wondering about...
When, when we get to the point of, okay, we're going to look at the maps now, we will try to do what we can to really advertise it out there to those people. And in fact, I'm still grappling with what's the best way to handle that. We had a number of specific requests, we've had some generalized discussion, we've had people that have requested several times, you know, I want this land use designation, and I've recommended no, and the, you know, the alternatives have been looked at, don't have it in, but they're, you know, still saying, I want this, you know. So, some cases, we said, that's a good idea, we'll make, we'll add that change to, you know, the next iteration. We'll have some more of that, but there's still people that probably will not have what they want to have on their map, and that'll be their opportunity for, to come forward. So, what I'm thinking of doing is trying to create sort of a table of, here's what, you know, here's what's requested, you know, the APN requested, what's recommended.
What's going on around it.
Yeah, you know, something, I don't want to spend a lot of time, essentially a general plan amendment application on 300 parcels. That's going to be pretty difficult to do. That's going to be pretty difficult to do. But enough information, so that we can sort of systematically go through all those, give the landowner the opportunity to present for, to you, and then we can make modifications so the map is, is desired. There's been some stuff that I've looked at subsequently, oh, that, you know, that makes sense, that should be changed.
Right.
With some, some generalized discussion of not individual properties, but, you know, sections of land.
Right.
That doesn't make any sense, you know, the more you look at it, the more you sort of see some things going on. So that will be, you know, be done, but I think that it would be most appropriate after we've done, looked at things like conservation of open space and safety and, and the other...
Sort of set the, the bigger picture.
Right.
Yeah.
And then let's get into the map. So that's why I'm thinking of doing that, sort of towards the end of our review process.
Well...
Because then you have something actually to, to look back on, and does it support the decisions that we made as far as overarching kind of policy decisions?
The policy language, exactly.
Instead of just, yeah, that makes sense.
We're talking about these map changes, these two hundred map changes. Those were the, the, you were fed that information in the various town halls, right? People came in and filled out a, a form?
Or in, in their correspondence to us.
Various ways?
Yeah.
Okay, so, would we be hearing only the people who had a, a problem that you didn't agree with, and so they're coming to us, or we're going to hear everybody?
We are going to hear specific comments as well as general comments. We're going to have general comments as to, we've got way too much growth, you know, proposal, we need to scale it back uniformly across the county.
Oh, no, we're going to hear that.
We're going to have the opposite of, you know, we need a lot more, you know, we need to stimulate economic development. Then we will have very specific requests by individuals. Most likely, there will be, I would say the vast majority will be, you know, I, I want something different for my property. There could be someone that says, that's wrong in that location, I don't want it, I don't like it there.
A neighbor.
A neighbor, you know, whoever it might be, that says, that's really inappropriate for whatever reason. So it could be both.
But I think also what, that your question is, I think the map that we would be presented with would be the map that already incorporates all of, you know, what Peter has said, oh, that makes sense.
Right, so there will be a, a draft map number four.
Right, that includes all of the...
And some, some people's desires, you know, will be...
Will have been accommodated.
Right, exactly.
That's, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Someone who was surrounded by, you know, a different zone, but, but they missed him, and it didn't make any sense, and you agreed, and so bam, this is the done deal, administrative.
Right, right.
Okay.
So I want to make sure we have plenty of time to get the map out, people look at it, you know, notify the hearing, and there'll probably be several days' worth of hearing, depending on how many people, you know, show up and how much time, you know, we debate, you know, the merits of the request. And then I'll try to work back the, the background element, as soon as that's done, we'll bring it back, and work that into our, our schedule as well. This is taking a lot longer than I anticipated, mostly...
Well, we kind of had a crisis in between there, too.
Well, yeah, but even that, you know, in August, it's just, you know, a lot going on, it's just taking longer to sort of incorporate, you know, we've got comments across the board. You know, we like this, we hate this, and everything in between. And so it's been difficult to try to assimilate those comments and come up with, here's what I think would be the best policy recommendation, based on everyone's comments. And, you know, some, you know, that makes a lot of sense, some don't make sense, and we'll just have to sort of work our way through those, those policies as we get into it. Land use will probably be one of the more involved discussion that we'll have. But, you know, circulation will also have issues, as well as all the other elements as well.
Was the public subject to a deadline on, on, on property designations, map changes?
Not really. I mean, we, we did set a deadline, it was March twentieth or something like that. That was, this is sort of the end of the public comment period. But, you know, people are still commenting, and they have the right to do so, and, and I'm not discounting those comments, if I don't have a chance to really look at it thoroughly. You know, and I think most people understood that, and they submitted their comments. But, you know, you'll have people that maybe didn't write anything, they'll show up at a public hearing, and we have to consider those comments. Not to agree with them, we have to consider them, as part of the process.
I have a general question, that is, this is kind of early in the game, but would you think there would be very much of an influx of work at your department because of the Butte Fire?
Yes, I would say I'd go over that a little bit. Right now, for the past week, week and a half now, half of my staff has been involved in one aspect or another of the Butte Fire, whether it's been helping out with animal services. I spent four days, including all weekend, working with environmental health, doing site hazard assessments for toxic, you know, toxic waste, stuff that were from the fire. Yes, or Tuesday, the board entered or agreed to an MOU with the state, it was signed yesterday, so that Cal Recycle and the Department of Toxic Substance Control will cover the cost of cleanup. And we really want people to utilize that. Of the five hundred or so folks that lost their homes, about half so far, at least two hundred, maybe more, have, you know, want the state to come in and do the cleanup. Homeowners have the right to do their own cleanup, but they're going to have to certify that it's been cleaned up properly. Where is the waste disposed of? You know, is the ground, you know, certified? You know, what the state will certify, that a three-year-old can play, you know, play in the dirt where the fire was, and won't be, be exposed to any kind of toxic waste. Heavy metals, plastics, anything that burned, lead from batteries, I, it's amazing what's out there, you know, melted, you know, the, it burned so hot that the, the aluminum blocks on vehicles turned into liquid, you just see, you know, liquid coming down, and just everything and anything out there. So we really want to get the word out that, you know, it will be covered a hundred percent by the state. If you have insurance, say that, you know, ten thousand dollars, you know, for cleanup would be applied to that, but it's going to cost forty to fifty thousand dollars to clean it up properly. People have the right to do it themselves, but unless it's certified as being done properly, they can show us receipts of where they dispose of it, you just can't dig a trench in your property and bury that stuff. It's got to be disposed of properly.
Will that certification be required before issuing a building permit?
Yes, yes. You know, there's so much going on right now, and we want to try to make it as easy as possible for people to rebuild. Amy sent me an ordinance that Tuolumne County adopted after the...
Rim Fire?
The Rim Fire, that provides a certain timeframe, extended timeframe for rebuilding, how you can put a temporary trailer on your property, because normally you can get a temporary trailer if you're building, but if you, you know, you still got to wait for the cleanup, and then you got to, you know, create new plans, and get the permit, you know, people need a place to live. So that's something the county's working on right now, there's just so much going on that, you know, and so many things, I have to say, I'm just amazed with Jason and the job he's been doing, and everyone else in the county, and just helping out with, with, you know, trying to make this recovery as, as easy as it can be, in a very, very horrible situation. So we will, you know, even if half the people rebuild, you know, that's two hundred and fifty building permits that, you know, we're going to have to check that we otherwise wouldn't, that's going to take a certain amount of time, it's maybe fifteen, twenty minutes per, per plan. I calculated about eighteen thousand dollars worth of staff time to review the plans just for the rebuilding, let alone what it's going to cost for the building department and environmental health. You know, we're trying, there's, the fees been waived on any kind of well or septic replacement permits, but there's been all kinds of damage, the risers on some of the engineered permits, those have melted into the ground, those will have to be replaced. In some cases, the well casings, or plastic well casings, those are melted. If there's any kind of bacteria in the soil that could have gotten in the wells, those need to be tested and, you know, sterilized and tested, or disinfected and then tested to make sure that well water's safe for drinking. The permit fees have been waived, but we do want to get the permit, so if you talk to people out there, let them know that, you know, this is important for their health as well as, you know, the safety of the community. Just a lot, a lot going on.
Right.
One last thing I have is, I think we sent an email out to you about the annual planning commissioners conference. If anyone's interested in going, we do have money in our budget for training, we can cover the cost of the registration, but food lodging, you're on your own. So if you're interested, let us know.
I was interested, but I didn't know if we were going to have a, a planning commission meeting that Thursday before, because that starts on a Friday, and you didn't have a travel day, if it was going to be a commission meeting. Where is it this year?
It's in...
June Lake, or some, Mammoth?
June Lake?
Yeah.
Down by June Lake, near, near, near LeVining.
Highway three ninety-five.
Yeah, between LeVining and Mammoth.
I have a question, because I read it through quite extensively. They talked about three different classes, that it seemed like it was a two-day event, but that the educational portion of it was very small, it was a lot of touring in a bus or in a gondola, and that kind of turned me off. I mean, if I'm going to do this, I want to go to the educational classes, and that seems like a two-day party to me.
You know, a lot of it is just networking and schmoozing with other commissioners to find out what's going on.
Been talking with them.
I'd rather go to structured classes, that just...
Yeah, you know, I've never been to one of these, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I went to all of them for a lot of years, because I was president of the organization, statewide.
So you did all the party?
No, but I got the most information that was useful from the tours.
Oh, you're serious, huh?
You mean talking to people while you're on the tour bus?
Well, yeah, and the people...
And the actual tour.
Plus, the kind of places they take you to show you.
Well, they're going to tour Mammoth, which is very similar to the areas that we live in.
Well, okay, so the tuition is, is it all or nothing, right? You can't like pick the second day where all the education classes are, or you get, get a reduced amount?
I think it's, it's a one, it's one...
It's not a per-day fee.
Yeah, it's, it's a cost of the event.
Is it a lot of money, what is it?
Two hundred bucks.
Two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars, something like that.
I'm going to save the money for the planning commission, I'll pick a class that's better suited for...
Well, I don't know if we're going to have a, we don't know whether or not we're going to have a planning commission meeting on that Thursday, do we?
I have a calendar with me.
I mean, I suppose if we can, because we've got a, an element ready to talk about.
Probably, I, that may be, that would be eighth, fourteen, that would be our regularly scheduled planning commission day. It's probably, unless the snows fly early, it's about a two and a half to three-hour drive from here.
Oh, I thought it was more than that, okay.
Maybe it's more.
Yeah, it's more.
It's more, as if you could go around the pass.
The best, the best way to go is, is over Sonora Pass.
Sonora?
Yeah. Take you down north of Bridgeport, then it's south from there, so, it's probably, probably about three and a half hours.
Well, it's a maybe for me, but unless they have a deadline for signing up.
I think that there was, anyway, it just, it's, it's there, it's available, if you're interested, we do have some money for training, if you guys come across anything else that you think would be beneficial as commissioner, particularly new commissioners. There are courses put on by various organizations for new planning commissioners, you know, some of the, you know, the public cover Brown Act stuff, but also just, you know, rules of procedure, SEQA, those kinds of things that might be beneficial, so, let me know if you come across anything, and if I see anything, I'll send it your way as well.
Thank you for the offer. So, the other thing is, I probably am not going to be at the October fifteenth meeting. I'm going to be working away.
Working?
Working away, yes.
Hey, Bill?
Yes, so just a little heads up about that. Ted? And we do have another public comment period, if Mr. Talia?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Bauer one question, he's working with the environmental health department.
Okay.
And one comment I wanted to make. Very fortunate, this county to have Jason and, and Brian. At a time like this, I've got Parkinson's, so I, my disease falls away. My, my question to you is, have they approached the state yet, or do you know regarding the waiving of the characterization in order to get dump sites to accept the hazardous waste that you're going to ship?
They're working with that right now. The landfill, the Rock Creek landfill will take any metal, any green waste, in this case, black waste, any kind of ash or other material has to be disposed of somewhere else, and they're still working on where that would be. But the state's going to, if, if, if you let the state in on your property, and there's a right-of-entry form that we have available now, you can sign, beginning as early as next week. I think DT, excuse me, DTSC is going to start coming in, and those people who have signed the right-of-entry, they can, you know, come in and start cleaning up next week. Probably October fifth, we're hoping that Cal Recycle will be able to start coming in and removing vehicles, you know, metal roofing, all the stuff that, you know, is destroyed in the fire, to prepare it for rebuilding. We've already assessed about two hundred, two hundred and fifty sites in the last week, which has been great, it's really put us a leg up on some of the other burn areas. Jason's really done a good job of working with the state to get them to prioritize us, and they were pretty impressed by the work that environmental health has done, with a lot of help from outside agencies, we've got a team up from LA, Sacramento County, San Joaquin County, I think Eldorado's coming down tomorrow, working through the weekend to assess as many sites as we can get to, so that then when DTSC goes in, they can look at our report, says, okay, we've got, you know, settling canisters, and propane tanks, and paints, and whatever else is out there, so they know what they're looking for when it comes time to clean up. They'll be in the full white suits, masks, and everything. People can still go through and sort, you know, looking for any valuables that might have survived. If they can, you know, pull off the roofing material and stack that aside, then DTSC can come in and, and do the cleanup, and Cal Recycle will haul all the, the waste away. But we haven't quite, I mean, other than wherever current existing certified, you know, hazardous waste disposal sites are...
That's always been one of the holdups on our part.
Yeah.
I was contracted for many...
We don't have any in, in the county that we operate, I don't think there's any, period in the county, so it's going to have to be taken somewhere else, wherever those might be, whether it's Nevada or some other landfill in the state. And maybe incineration is the way it goes, I don't know.
The problem is, right now, too, as far as the metals are concerned, that, you know, the appliances have got burdened, metal roofing and stuff, there's no market for it at all, nobody will pay for it. They'll let you dump it, but they won't pay for it.
Well, and that can be taken to the landfill, as long as it's not hazardous.
And I just want to further up my comments about Jason and Brian. I worked with almost every county in this state, and I never worked with more, two people that had more care for the people in the community than they do.
That's great, thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
I worked with, in Tuolumne County before they came over here, and they were the same over there.
No, thank you, I'm sure they'll appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Talia.
I was here for Friday through Monday, and I'll tell you, we got here at seven o'clock in the morning, and staff at this entire county was amazing those four days. You guys were gone, already doing assessments by the time we got here and coming in after we were finishing up, I was impressed. And Jason, those GIS maps he's working on are amazing. But I had an email that said, they're hearing that environmental health is not, that they are now, that they are not going to do the mandatory inspections before Samaritan's Purse can go in and clean, have you heard that? So before Samaritan's Purse wasn't allowed to go in until environmental health did an inspection, has something changed on that?
Well, there's been some challenges with, you know, volunteer organizations that want to come in and help out, and, you know, the public, individual property owners can clean it up themselves, but it's going to have to be certified. And if, you know, it means soil testing. And if, if the state does it, the state covers all the costs. If you want to do it yourself, it's on, it's on their dime. And so if, you know, Samaritan's Purse or other organizations out there will haul away the stuff, but they won't certify that your property's clean, they won't handle the toxic, so they may take away eighty percent of the stuff, you know, the easy stuff to take away. But then you're responsible, the property owner's responsible for the rest of it, and that could cost, you know, twenty or thirty thousand dollars, because that's the expensive part, that's, you know, what do you do? We want to, we want to make sure that it's disposed of properly, we want a receipt to say, where did you take this?
Okay.
And, and it's, it's, you know, we understand that, that people, they're anxious to get back in their homes, they want to rebuild as soon as they can, but Jason's environmental health department's concerned about... But Jason's environmental health department is concerned about the community health and what happens with all this toxic material that's out there. You know, does it get into our water system? Does it, you know, if you're driving down the road with a truckload of ash, is it, you know, flying out the back and contaminating the community? Those are the kind of things that we're very concerned about. We want to make sure that it's done properly, so.
So the answer is yes, you can do it, but you're not going to get the state's certification.
And it's going to make it more costly and more challenging.
It's going to make it more costly and probably take longer in the long run, yeah, okay.
So we encourage everyone to utilize the resources that's available to us. We're very lucky to have that, and very lucky to have, you know, be sort of on top of the list. Cal recycle is finishing up from a fire up in Trinity County. As soon as they're done with that, they're coming here. We sort of jumped ahead of Lake County. And so that's, because of the work that environmental health department has done, we've prepped it. They were very impressed that we've done that much work already, and so they're ready to move right in.
Great.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned. No meeting next week, but we will see you the 1st, I guess it is, or the 2nd or whatever the.
The 8th.
The 8th.
Next week, next week is the 1st.
The 1st. We'll see you on the 8th then. Thank you.